Welcome to the August 24, 2021, meeting of the Calver County Board of Commissioners. At this time, we have Pastor Ralph Nevin from the First Baptist Church of Calver County to give us an invocation.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning to everybody, and let's stand together and we'll pray and ask the Lord for his blessing. Lord, we want to thank you for your manifold blessings to us, your bountiful blessings. You've been so good to us in this country, in our state, and even in our county. And for that, we want to give you thanks. Lord, as we look at what is going on across the world, we recognize that we certainly need your help and your guidance and your wisdom on all levels of government. And I just pray especially for our fellow Americans who are stranded there in Afghanistan, I would ask, Lord, that you will give those that are in authority over us some wisdom, some sense, and knowing what to do and how to evacuate those folks and how to get them out of there safely. I pray also, Lord, that you would comfort their families. I'm certain that they're very concerned, as any of us would be. And then, Lord, I'm thankful that our county commissioners still see the need of coming to you as they start their meeting, asking for wisdom and guidance and direction. I pray, Lord, that you might, as they have to make hard decisions, I pray that you would show them exactly what they should do. I know, Lord, that many times that maybe folks have friends that are pushing them one way or the other, or they might have agendas, and I'm certainly not saying that that's the case with any of these men today, but yet, Lord, help them to realize that they are servants of the people here at this county, and help them to do the very best they can in making decisions, recognizing that they ultimately have a responsibility and an accountability before the Lord God. So guide them and direct them throughout this day. We pray in your precious name. Amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible).
So the next item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Are there any corrections or additions to the agenda as presented? Chair would entertain a motion.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor, any discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Five oh. Thank you. Don't we know if we have any public service announcements today? Don't see any. Next item on the agenda is a proclamation. Commissioner Wiems?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President.
There's someone in the audience?
Oh. Ms. Kelly, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kelly Robertson-Slegel, Director of Economic Development. I am honored to be joined today with Mr. Bryant Parker, who is president of the Calver County Minority Business Alliance. We also have his parents, Mr. and Mrs. Jefferson, joining us today. In addition, we have Kathy Maney from the Calver County Chamber of Commerce here to celebrate this proclamation with us. So, Mr. Parker, if you want to come up? And I'll turn it back to you, Commissioner Wiems.
All right. Mr. Parker?
Good evening. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm happy to be here and to accept this proclamation on behalf of Black History Month, August being that for entrepreneurship. And the Calver County Minority Business Alliance is always favored and honored to receive a proclamation and any recognition from this commission.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Whereas National Black Business Month was founded in 2004 by Frederick E. Jordan, Sr., and John William Templeton to recognize the contributions of black-owned businesses throughout the country and to encourage their continued development. And whereas, black business owners account for about 10% of U.S. businesses and about 30% of all minority-owned businesses, amounting to approximately 2.6 million companies with black owners, generating approximately $150 billion in annual receipts. And whereas, nearly 40% of black-owned businesses are in health care and social assistance, repair and maintenance, personal and laundry services, advertising firms, auto dealerships, consulting services, restaurants, barber shops, beauty salons, and more. And whereas, Calver County is home to black-owned businesses that provide family, supporting jobs, and careers to residents throughout the county, serving as the driving force for the Calver County Minority Business Alliance. And whereas, local governments, Chamber of Commerce, and business associations throughout Maryland must continue working towards inclusion, empowerment, and support for black-owned enterprises. And whereas, Calver County encourages its citizens to support black-owned businesses in their communities during the month of August and throughout the year, and pause to reflect on the numerous contributions of black entrepreneurs in our county. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County, that the month of August 2021 be celebrated and recognized as National Black Business Month. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners urge every citizen to support our black-owned businesses, given it under our hands and seal this 24th day of August 2021. Ms. Bryant?
We had a couple other members of the Calver County Minority Business Alliance join us. If you want to come up for a picture, please do.
(Inaudible). Morning. How you doing? Morning. Good. There she is.
We don't like it.
You know, all the short jokes they do, right? They give you a school standing up. Good morning. Everybody.
Oh, you'll find, don't you stand next to me? Oh, you don't have to stand next to your son. Your son?
Oh, yes, man, I'm free.
All right. Kevin, get my good sign.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
So the next item on the agenda is a recognition, so Lisa Toleme?
Lisa Vivarett.
Lisa Vivarett, sorry. I'm used to the other Lisa.
Good morning, Lisa.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good to see you.
Good to see you. I am Lisa Vivarett, Human Resources Analyst II, the Department of Human Resources. With me today is Deana Davis, Deputy Director of its Department of Human Resources.
Good morning.
I want to thank you for this opportunity to give special recognition to our employees who have completed the fiscal year 2021 Supervisor Development Career Series. Going to read the background from the memo. The Department of Human Resources is pleased to recommend special recognition to those employees who aspire to perform at the highest levels of public service and have met the voluntary basic level of training outlined in the Supervisor Development Career Series. The Supervisor Development Career Series is a program designed to help existing, new, or prospective supervisors formalize or gain the skills necessary to maximize the engagement and productivity of their teams. This year, 17 employees earned a certificate. These individuals have voluntarily demonstrated their commitment to building relationships, personal growth, and lifelong learning. They have completed not less than eight of the 16 sessions offered during fiscal year 2021. I am now going to call up these employees and introduce them to the citizens and to the board. Jennifer L. Barney could not be with us today. She is Office Specialist I with the Division of Solid Waste. Virginia A. Basset, Administrative Aid with the Sheriff's Office. Victoria A. Bosscher, Acting Recreation Coordinator with the Department of Parks and Recreation. She could not be with us today. David E. Carpenter, Senior Human Resources Analyst with the Department of Human Resources. Hillary W. Daly, Tourism Program Specialist with the Program of, I'm sorry, with the Department of Economic Development. Melinda D. Gaines, Program Specialist I with the Office on Aging Division. Sharon M. Hudson, Acting Office Specialist I with the Department of Parks and Recreation. Lauren M. Kramer, Benefits Assistant with the Department of Human Resources. Craig Lindquist is joining us via Teams. He is Administrative Aid with the Division of Solid Waste. Erica J. Love also joining us via Teams. She is Recreation Coordinator with the Department of Parks and Recreation. Corinne E. Moore, Administrative Aid with the Railway Museum. Taylor J. Morton, Sports Assistant Coordinator with the Department of Parks and Recreation. Linda M. Roberts could not be here with us today. She is Program Specialist II with the Office on Aging. Pamela S. Ryan, Administrative Aid with the Detention Center. Carla M. Schauer, Food Service Coordinator with the Office on Aging Division. Ellen B. Simpson could not be with us today. She's joining us via Teams. She's Risk Manager with the Department of Human Resources. And last, but not least, Elizabeth Lisa Toleme, Procurement Specialist I with the Department of Finance and Budget. Congratulations, everybody.
Congratulations. Thank you. Good. Good. Hi, baby.
So it's always an honor and a privilege to celebrate when our staff enhances their
own lives, which, into the end of the day, enhances county government. So we appreciate you all taking the extra effort to do these programs and classes. So thank you very much.
That's a thanks, right? You got to go back to work.
Right. Slave drivers. Next item on the agenda is appointments. Deputy Administrator Vasallo?
Good morning, Commissioners. Linda Vasallo, Deputy County Administrator. We have three rounds of appointments this morning. The first one is for the Commission on Aging. The staff is requesting a motion to appoint Christine Newell Flaherty for District One and Ann Wiems for District Two. Once these appointments are made, you will have one vacancy remaining.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Second. So I have a motion and a second to appoint Christine Flaherty, District One, and Ann Wiems, District Two. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Your second round of appointments is for the Dunkirk Town Center Architecture Review Committee, and I'm going to turn that over to the board for discussion.
So the board has a list in front of them of...
Commissioners, what I would say about this particular one is we, a lot of times we have a commission that will provide a qualified member. In this case, we have two incumbents that are interested in staying. I think the idea was that the individual that was recommended by the commission is a solid person to put in there, but it's still, it's your choice, the incumbents versus that other person.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion.
Yes, sir.
To reappoint Jess W. Alexander as the architect member and reappoint Gary Armstrong to the Dunkirk Town Center Architecture Review Committee.
Second. So I have a motion and a second to reappoint...
You got two seconds.
Yeah. I have a motion and a second to reappoint Jess Alexander and Gary Armstrong to the Dunkirk Town Center Architecture Review Committee. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And your final round of appointments today are for the Social Services Advisory Board. The staff is requesting a motion to appoint Danielle Rowe for District Two. Following this appointment, there will be no vacancies remaining.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Second. I have a motion and a second to appoint Danielle Rowe, District Two, to the Social Services Advisory Board. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And your final round of appointments today are for the Social Services Advisory Board. The staff is requesting a motion to appoint Danielle Rowe for District Two. Following this appointment, there will be no vacancies remaining.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Second. I have a motion and a second to appoint Danielle Rowe, District Two, to the Social Services Advisory Board. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And your final round of appointments today are for the Social Services Advisory Board. The staff is requesting a motion to appoint Danielle Rowe for District Two. Following this appointment, there will be no vacancies remaining.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Second. I have a motion and a second to appoint...
You got two seconds.
Yeah. I have a motion and a second to reappoint Jess Alexander and Gary Armstrong to the Dunkirk Town Center Architecture Review Committee. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And your final round of appointments today are for the Social Services Advisory Board. The staff is requesting a motion to appoint Danielle Rowe for District Two. Following this appointment, there will be no vacancies remaining.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Second. I have a motion and a second to appoint Danielle Rowe, District Two, to the Social Services Advisory Board. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So the next item on the agenda is consent. Item one, Department of Finance and Budget Award Recommendation, ITB 2022-009 Brush and Wood Grinding Recycling Services. Item number two, Department of Finance and Budget Award Recommendation, ITB 2022-001 Construction of Salt Barn Storage Buildings. Item three, Department of Finance and Budget Award Recommendation, ITB 2022-008 Drainage Pipes, Bands, Flanged End Sections and Fittings. And that's the list. Any objections? Hearing none. The consent agenda is approved. Next item on the agenda is new business. Item one, Department of Finance and Budget.
Good morning.
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 Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Sharon Strand, Acting Director of Finance and Budget. And I'm here with Amanda Odell, Procurement Division Chief. Background, for the purpose of this contract is to provide grounds care mowing services for county right-of-way sites and pond areas for the Division of Highway Maintenance. Sites may be added or deleted as the county may require. Contract is for one year with the option to renew for four additional one-year terms. The previous contract was awarded to Honey Cove Lawn Care LLC on June 5, 2018. In FY '20, the county expended $22,890 for this service. The amount varies yearly based on the number of mows and facilities and may exceed $30,000 per year. Discussion. During the weeks of June 6, 2021, and June 13, 2021, advertisements appeared in two local papers, the eMaryland Marketplace website, and the county's Facebook page soliciting bids for the reference contract. As part of the bid requirement, mandatory site visits were conducted on June 5, 2021, and potential bidders followed a staff member from the Division of Highway Maintenance to each site. Two bids were received and opened during a virtual bid opening on July 7, 2021. The bid tabulation from the opening and bid comparison showing unit pricing and totals are attached. The bids were thoroughly reviewed, due diligence was conducted, and DeAngelo Brothers LLC was determined to be the lowest apparent bidder, meeting all requirements of the specifications. Due diligence conducted included, one, analyzing unit prices bids, which reveal pricing consistent with previous contract unit prices. Current market trends and unit price differences between the two bidders showed one or the other bidder higher or lower depending on the mow location. Two, determining how DeAngelo Brothers LLC was a principal office in Luzerne County, Pennsylvania, could provide the required services in Calver County, and it was learned that they have an Anaronda County location. Three, researching to determine if the county's government, government's lawn care is a local business located in Calver County, and Calver County government has reciprocal preference for resident bidders. And it was discovered that county government of Luzerne only gives a preference if there is a tied bid, and Anaronda County has no provisions for local preference. Therefore, Calver County government's reciprocal preference for resident bidders is not applicable. And four, reference checks for DeAngelo Brothers LLC provided satisfactory comments. Fiscal impact, funding for this contract is allocated in Highway Maintenance Contracted Services Account 252-27515. Conclusion, recommendation. In accordance with Section 6-101 of the Code of Public Laws, it is recommended that the Board of County Commissioners adopt staff-recommended findings and award the unit-priced contract to the lowest responsive bidder, DeAngelo Brothers LLC of Hazelton, Pennsylvania.
Gentlemen, I'm going to back to what you said last session.
Do we need to have a motion first?
No, we can just discuss. Oh, okay. Do we need to do a motion and then go to discussion?
That would be, that would be most proper, yes.
Okay.
When did we become proper?
Sure.
The floor is open for a motion.
All right, well, I'll make a motion so that we can get to discussion. So I'll make a motion to, at this juncture, accept what budget and finances said, just so we can get to discussion.
Second.
Okay.
So I have a motion and a second that we adopt staff's recommendation and award the unit-priced contract to the lowest responsive bidder, which is DeAngelo Brothers LLC of Hazelton, Pennsylvania. Is there a discussion on that motion?
Yes, so kind of to Commissioner Gadway's point last session, you know, I'm looking at it, and it's $3,000. It's probably about 8%. Looks like all the boxes were checked and all, but when I go through it, itemizing it, and that's not what I do for a living, the biggest discrepancy, I think, is in the one up in Prince Frederick, Honeycomb's done this for years, and I would have a question why it's so far off there, you know what I mean? They're lower on all these other bids. I would like to send this back like we did before, if possible, because I'm just having a hard time, I don't know, I don't know what you guys thinking, but I mean, they've had, they've done this for a few years now, so.
Commissioner Gadway?
You're exactly where I was a couple weeks ago, asking this question, and I had the opportunity to sit down with the staff this morning, as well with Amanda. The key thing that I didn't realize is the reciprocal preference.
Sure.
Reciprocal preference.
Sure.
I was educated on that. I got the grasp on it, and I understand a little bit more about the negatives and the cons that also come with going with a local preference through legislation or stuff like that. And if you can, Ms. Amanda, if you can help on a couple of those cons that you explained to me this morning, and explain the reciprocal preference that does exist, that does allow us some flexibility currently.
Sure. So currently, we do have reciprocal preference, where we have the opportunity to go if a out-of-county or out-of-area vendor does show as the apparent bidder, we can go to their jurisdiction to see if they have a local vendor preference, and if they do, we can mirror what they have, where, and then if our local vendor is on that bidder's list, we can award to them as long as we keep in that variance. We did do the due diligence here, where Anaronda County does not have local vendor preference in Luzerne County, Pennsylvania, where they are headquartered, but this is the point, only have local vendor preference in the event of a tie. And we did do go back through reference tracks and do whatnot for our county's bill, and we did do all of the due diligence, and we stand by the recommendation.
Oh, and I'm not disputing that. In fact, it was me and Steve's board that put that in. So we put in that reciprocal thing, and basically, it's a, it's a growing, evolving document to, because we had nothing, to try to get something to go. But this is, this is a case where you're absolutely right. It checks all the boxes of code that we put in, but when you look at it and you go, that's small amount, I know they have an Anaronda office, you don't have the concern of coming from Pennsylvania, but, and I know we don't have a column in there for that business paying its taxes to the county, buying its resources from here, living here. To me, this is, this is something that, whether we can do something with this today, but this has to be an absolute example of why we need to perfect this a little bit further.
And I agree with you on that. I understand this morning on the reciprocal side, hypothetically, if we do put in a local preference, then, and I didn't understand how that could hurt our local businesses in other counties, and I was educated that this morning. Could you explain that?
Sure. So one of the reasons why that could hinder us is because other counties could have the same reciprocal preference, and therefore, if one of our vendors goes to another county and they are the lowest apparent bidder, that county then comes to Calver to say, hey, do they have a local vendor preference? And we do, that could leave our vendor out for many chances of winning in another county because they can mirror what we have.
Sure.
And we took that into consideration when we were doing the last one, but, you know, and yes, that can happen. Can a business travel outside of jurisdiction and go, you know what, I had this contract for years? So where's the line? And that, you know, obviously, we had put that in to see it, to get some data. We should have some of that collected now. I think it's something that we need to entertain in the future, but, but, you know, the difference of, say, and I get that, you know, worrying about that business, because that's who we're trying to take care of, right? We're trying to take care of local business, so you don't want to hurt them there. But there is a fine line of, hey, now we took a local company and they can't work in their backyard, and we don't know that they're getting work over there. I mean, we're assuming that it's going both ways all the time, but we don't know that. So when it's taxpayer dollars generated from Calver County folks, and I think I speak for the board, we always want it to stay here, always. So, and I get that 1% on a million dollars is different than 1% on 50,000. I get that, and that's the danger in there, so that, and that's why there was a lot of holes in what we did, but we had to do something, to try to get something on the books, to collect some data. You know, we used to sigh almost, I mean, it was, it was like every time we did a contract, it seemed like it was leaving out of here. A lot more have stayed in the county of recent, but if you go back to the first board I was on, it seemed like everything went out. I mean, I guess John Norris, does this is what it is? To make it simple?
Certainly, the board can give us some direction on how you'd like to see things handled. There are matters that we would have to take to the General Assembly to get them to pass in Annapolis, but depending on which direction we got from the board, and how you want to spend taxpayer money, and how do you offset that with the residency requirement that you know you're going to get some income tax revenue back from it versus a... There are matters that we would have to take to the General Assembly to get them to pass in Annapolis. But depending on which direction we got from the board and how you want to spend taxpayer money, and how do you offset that with the residency requirement that you know you're going to get some income tax revenue back from it versus a company like XYZ that may be the size of an Amazon, that's an international company, but has 50 employees that work in the county or 500 employees that work in the county? So how you define resident defines whether or not you're going to get the revenues you receive. Whether or not you have county businesses that are working in Prince George's, Charles, Alexandria, Fairfax, that could be penalized by having a local preference here, we'll only be guessing.
Well, and you bring up a good point, too, because, and I don't know this company's background, I don't pretend to know, but they're in Pennsylvania to have an office in Anarondo, how large are they? You know, I've been on record many times, I hate the large corporations of the world. I just do. I don't like that when they come in, that they're able to buy their way in so many times. It's on record, I'm not saying anything that people don't know, you know. We've seen it forever. It used to be a guy shines your shoes, that don't happen. It used to be a TV repairman guy, that don't happen. I mean, it used to be a guy would come out and pump your gas, that don't happen. We've watched all these small businesses go away, go away, go away, go away. I mean, even those farming, buddy can speak to that with these super farms. I mean, the pressure and what they're able to do, I hate it with a passion. And I don't want to facilitate it in my own county, you know. So if we can't do anything for a situation like this, we've got to be smart enough somehow in the future to address this.
In the discussions that I had this morning with the staff and Amanda, it sounds to me like there is possibilities of us to be able to do something moving forward. You just touched on something that we're talking here about local preference. You just touched on a word right there, possibly small business preference. You know, you use the word "small business." You know, I think that there's...
Is that legal, John? Or is that something that's got to be researched?
Commissioner, we'd have to look into this, but we're certainly taking notes on all these things.
I'm ready to go ahead and not necessarily accept defeat on this, I'm not saying that. But understanding now what I didn't know a couple of weeks ago, as much as I don't like it, I understand it a whole lot more now. And I'm willing to accept it begrudgingly.
Could we rebid it?
You can always rebid it, it's just a matter of you might have to think of it all.
Right.
So I guess like John had hit on what we're not taking into consideration is, on this company, we're not getting any personal property tax, we're not getting any income tax if they're not hiring local people in the county. So those are downfalls. And the other thing would be, do they just have a PO box in Anarondo County? Or do they have a physical location?
That's a great question.
Have we inspected that and inspected their equipment, that they're qualified to do the work?
I have not personally inspected their location or their equipment.
Have they done work for us?
In Prince George's County, they physically go to your location, certify it, and they inspect the equipment to make sure that they're qualified to do the work. Because like we know, the local vendor's been doing it for years, so we know that they can do it for sure. But saving this a little bit of money and not knowing for sure that they can do it, it just concerns me.
So they actually are performing the work for us right now. Because the contract has expired. And what we do is when the contract is coming up for expiration or we can get it in front of the board to approve, we reach out to the incumbent to ask them to extend the validity of their pricing to continue working within the contract. Honeycomb actually did not want to extend the validity of their pricing within the contract. Therefore, we asked the companies, since it is below the informal or below the formal threshold, if they would be willing to do the work for us until an award is put in place. And they agreed as the pricing within their contract. So they are having to do the work for us for about three and a half, four weeks maybe, a little bit longer, until we can have an award in place.
So DeAngelo Brothers is currently doing the contract in the gap. So we know they can do the work. And they know the scope of the work if they're doing it.
And per my knowledge, Highway is pleased with the work that's being done.
And Honeycomb declined to...
Extend the pricing on their current contract. So in an effort to save the county money, we reached out to the lower to see if they would pull their pricing about an agreement in place, and they agreed they can do the work.
What are the possibilities? And I didn't touch on this morning, I just came up with a question, but what are the possibilities that DeAngelo or whoever the successful bidder is, could come back later on and say, "Oh, you know what, I need to add this on," or change, you know, change their amounts, the scope or whatever. If we don't change the scope of what is required, can they come back and say, "Hey, I need to add this on because XYZ costs more?"
So every year, within these contracts that have the one-year base period or years to option, every year we do allow the vendors to come with a cap of 3% to request an escalation, because we understand that escalation, yearly escalation...
Well, look at gas. I mean, obviously, they're using a lot of gas in what they do, and gas is up a dollar a gallon from this time last year.
But there is a window of when they can do that, before each option renew. And we do ask the county, have the ability to approve it or deny it. It's not often that we deny it, because we do understand that escalation does happen. But it is not something they can come back to mid-contract in the middle of the year and say, "Hey, by the way, I need a 10% increase." Or 10%.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Commissioner Markless, County Administrator, I understood your question also to include, can they come in midterm and say, "I'm not happy with what I said I could do it for. Now I'm smarter, I need to double that amount or raise it by 50%."
Correct, that's kind of where my basis of the question was.
No, I talk to them, no, they cannot just come in and say, "Hey, I want more money, or I'm not going to do the work."
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any other discussion? So the motion and the second on the floor is that we award the contract to DeAngelo Brothers LLC of Hazelton, Pennsylvania. Any other discussion?
I guess since they declined to do that, we have to get the work done. But I would hope that we would come back with a work session and to definitely dig into this a little deeper.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the extra efforts.
So you didn't know there was a pop quiz this morning, right?
So the next item on the, is item number two under New Business Department of Public Works Director Dahl.
I was looking forward to this one. My Lamborghini should be out in the parking lot. Did you get the color I requested? I need the two-tone paint.
I think you wanted black and gold, is that correct, sir?
Hey, hey, now we're talking. Hey, he gets points for that.
Got to get it where you can.
Finally, he gets some points.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners again. Today, I'm going to sit in front of you for a couple of items. First one is going to be the county vehicle take-home policy. Background. Department of Public Works drafted a Calvert County vehicle take-home policy with the intent to more efficiently support operational requirements and emergency response opportunities. Members of field staff for the county currently must drive to the Prince Frederick Town Center to claim their county operational vehicle and then drive to job sites to support the community and county operations. Discussion. Any vehicle purchased or leased by the department registered to or maintained by the county may be taken home by employees with the approval of the department head. The department head will review the authority of the assigned take-home vehicle policy every two years. DBW believes that allowing county employees to take home their assigned vehicle will provide county the following benefits. One, reduce the amount of response time in emergency conditions. Two, increase the amount of usable parking space in the county parking lots. Three, reduce travel time for employees to and from job sites by driving straight to a job from their home or vice versa. Personal use of any county vehicle is prohibited. No passengers other than county employees are permitted. The employee shall maintain records of all vehicles' assignments, including a vehicle utilization log for each vehicle, when in use after normal business hours, and forward the log to the department head at the end of each month. Fiscal impact. The take-home use of a county vehicle is a taxable fringe benefit. The value of this benefit will be imputed according to the current IRS guidelines and reported on an employee's W-2. Vehicle take-home will add an additional cost of approximately $2,000 to the county to include maintenance and gasoline. I will basically say with the impact of what I just said there in that last area. One, and it's in the policy, this does not apply to county employees that are deemed public safety officers. That would be the sheriff's department, people working for public safety, i.e. animal control, things of that nature. Because these people are on duty and they will essentially not be billed for taking their vehicle home while they're on duty, is what I'm getting at. And that $2,000 per year is essentially a worst-case scenario. We do believe that if somebody lives closer or so are, that that cost will be less, that'll actually be a burden to the county and in some places be more efficient and actually save the county money, which we can talk about. Conclusion and recommendation. DBW requests the Board of County Commissioners adopt the Calvert County vehicle take-home policy. Subdue your questions, sir, that's all I have.
Well, Karen, that law's been on the books for a while. And that is, it is very dicey about, you know, what, some companies handle it where the employee handles the maintenance, some, I mean, it's all over the map. So I definitely won't try to speak to that. I think the one thing that I want to make sure we do is, we want to be as efficient, obviously, as you said. You know, we don't want, there's a water main break or there's something that needs urgent attention. A person's driving 30, 40 minutes, get a vehicle. It might not be equipped, you know, I mean, you know, the whole thing.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
So we want to avoid that. And then at the same token, too, you don't want them using their personal vehicle to just go, "Hey, it's 10 minutes from here," you know what I mean?
Yes, sir.
So I'm not, I just don't know the legalities, and that's John Norris saying, of where that line is. But that's what I would be hoping to get out of this, is to check those boxes.
I believe there's going to be more efficient use of both personnel's time and of the actual vehicles involved. So less trips is the way I look at it.
Right, because you're paying overtime on those visits.
Correct.
Mr. President?
Right.
Can I make a motion?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt this policy.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second on the floor that we adopt the Calvert County vehicle take-home policy. Any discussion on that motion?
Before, yeah, John, does it, where are we on that? I mean, for what, do you foresee issue?
We've reviewed and approved this policy as legally sufficient.
So it leaves that type of latitude where any, okay, they have weekend, whatever to... If you're happy, I'm happy.
Within the confines of this policy, as long as they follow the rules.
Okay.
I can personally attest to this from two different angles, as an employee and a business owner. As an employee, one of my previous jobs at Verizon, we had to report to work, report to the shop. We'd get there, have a short crew meeting, end up loading the truck, unloading the truck, talking, having a cup of coffee, this or that.
Hours are ticking.
Minutes and hours are ticking. Then we get in the truck, then we go out to our first job. We started on the clock at 7:00.
It might be 10:00 for your time to rest.
Well, not that far.
Well, I mean...
But, you know, it was, when they went to a take-home policy and we went from six hours productive work per day to seven hours and 45 minutes worth of productive work per day. I think it's a huge benefit to the county, and I want to go on the record of saying it's going to, I personally believe that there's a huge benefit of a minimum 10% to 15% increase in productivity, savings. I'm not a bean counter, but I don't know where the $2,000 a year came in. I hope that they're...
Came from fleet maintenance.
Right, I hope that they're not taxed that.
No, 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 that's not a charge. That's potentially a worst-case scenario incurred cost for the use of the vehicle for personal use.
Right, and then the employees got to come out of pocket.
Right, I just don't want to see the employees have to pay additional taxes based on the fringe benefit of the W-2.
And that can happen.
Right.
So that's why my question is, because I've seen that coming from when I was on the road all the time. There's one company that I deal with, they've taken all the vehicles away. And Mr. Williams can tell you about that. So that's, I got a lot of familiarity with that as well. I just don't know what the current IRS regulations are on that. And that's why the employee could be going, "Hey, this is great, it's efficient, it's good." And then at the end of the year, their accountant turns around and says, "Hey, you owe XYZ because you didn't claim this properly."
It will be based on use by the activity log that they're actually going to fill out.
We just have to really make sure our employees are very clear on, you know...
Understood, sir. And if we partnered with all department heads that are actually leveraging this policy for their work, I anticipate that Parks and Rec, Planning and Zoning, Public Works will be primary users of it. And we'll be working with finance and budget to actually work out the actual dollar amounts that would be involved with it.
Yeah, we just need a lot of communication because...
It's a policy that can be changed back if it ain't working, so.
Correct.
Right, I just worry, April 15th, tax time, all of a sudden we got employees going, "What?"
And it's also based on frequency of use as well. So if you use it more, it will cost more.
Are you having them sign anything, that they're aware of this type of...
Yes, sir, it's on the activity log, utilization log for the vehicle.
And please, please, somebody really explain to them...
Yes, sir.
You know.
I thought the charge was based on where you lived and the distance to your work.
That right there is not necessarily been completely defined. I'll say that right now, okay? Because we do, I mean, if I look at the north-south orientation of the county, if you will, it's, if I went to the far north or the far south, yes, that's how it was originally calculated. But it's not actually in the policy where it states that.
Yeah, because...
We're not going to have somebody ride from northern Prince George's County in a county vehicle.
No.
That's not going to happen.
County line's the limit. So John's shaking his head.
And I can add that specifically to the policy.
Oh, absolutely, it can't be, I live in Montana and I'm on call in Calvert.
Okay, got it.
John, did you want to add something?
No, sir, we're fine.
Oh, okay. So I, you know, I view this like teleworking from home. You know, it's a benefit to the employees, it's a benefit to us, you know, for both of us. It's a benefit. But it's got to be monitored, just like anything else.
Yes, sir.
You know...
It takes a little bit of leadership to make this work right.
You know, you can say, "I'm going to take this vehicle and run some errands and I'll be fine," and then you have an accident, and we know exactly where you were and who was in the vehicle. So employees have to be conscious of, you know, their actions and that consequences.
And not rolling the basket from Safeway into the truck, because that phone's going to ring up here. I mean, so, you know, I mean, it's, people, the Calvert logo's on every vehicle, so...
So, again, it's just have to be monitored. But, you know, it's crazy to me that inspectors live in Solomons every morning, get up and drive to Prince Frederick and get their truck and drive back to Solomons to do an inspection.
Correct.
So the next step is gas cards, so they don't have to drive to Prince Frederick to get gas every time they're in Solomons.
Yes, sir, that's forthcoming.
And we know you're working on that. So I don't have any other discussion if nobody else?
I'm sorry, Commissioner.
I'll call for the vote.
Was there an amendment so that the policy requires that the residents be within Calvert County?
There was not an amendment.
Not, okay.
Would we like an amendment?
Yes, I would.
So would you like to make a motion to amend the motion? Or the motion maker can amend his own motion.
I think it's got to come from Commissioner Gadway, or no?
No, doesn't have to.
So I'll make a motion to accept staff's recommendation with the addition of the employee must be a Calvert County resident.
So that would be a replacement motion, so...
Is that a problem for any of your workers, do you know?
I would have to look at it. For the proponents of the guys that I'm working with, it's not going to be an issue.
Okay.
John?
So that's a motion to amend, actually, replace the original motion. We're asking for, if there was to be a motion to amend the first motion, that would be a motion that the county employee must reside within the county. There'd need to be a second, and then we can vote on the amendment and then vote on the first motion.
All right, so I'll make a motion that the employee has to be a resident of Calvert County.
So...
That's an amendment.
Is there a second to the motion to amend the original motion? So I have a motion and a second to amend the original motion to include the language that employees cannot, if they reside outside of Calvert County, cannot take their county vehicles to that residence. Is that clear to everyone?
Yes.
So any more discussion on the motion to amend? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to amend, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. So now what we have before us is the amended motion that we adopt the take-home policy based on the language we just included. Any discussion on the amended motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, Karen.
I think you're up next.
Yes, I am. All right, gentlemen, the next memo is concerning with the North Beach... All right, gentlemen, the next memo is concerning with the North Beach Line Sharing Agreement. The Department of Public Works' background, Department of Public Works Water and Sewerage Division revised the 1995 Line Sharing Agreement with the town of North Beach in order to allocate costs between the two parties. Discussion, the town and the county share pump stations that move sewage to Chesapeake wastewater, Chesapeake Beach wastewater treatment plant. Due to the age of the original document, it was agreed to assess and then revise cost allocations between the two parties. Fiscal impact, variable costs of this agreement will be determined annually by flow meters. Flow to the jointly owned server sewer lines and pump stations will be measured from their respective origins, town or county. Is it expected that the annual flow readings could change slightly from historical precedence, but it is expected that the data collected will be more accurate than under the previous agreement? Since fiscal year 2018, that's since 2018, the county has paid a total of $74,147.2 to the town of North Beach under this agreement. Conclusion, the public work, Department of Public Works Water and Sewerage Division staff is requesting the board president sign the attached North Beach Line Sharing Agreement on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners. So, gentlemen, what I will say is that this was normally calculated before on EDUs. With the technology since the original line sharing agreement, we have these flow meters installed now at different locations and we're actually basing it off the actual flows. So, but what we have figured out is the EDU allocation was pretty decent, it wasn't bad. And based on the flows, it's more accurate, but the cost variance is not much from what it actually is and what it has been that we've done the calculations on. But we are getting more accurate data now than what we were in previous recordings of this. So, that's all I have at the moment.
So, Kerry, this isn't going to cost the residents any more money?
It's, based on the actual data that we've collected, it's not going to cost, I, I would say, when I asked James and I had the discussion with him in details about this, is that, I said, so what's the difference in cost? He goes, not much at all.
And I've never liked EDUs, I understand the premise for them, I've never liked them. I have two where I'm at, one's not even functional, but it is what it is, it was the agreement I went into years ago, I understand the premise because we didn't have anything and we had to have something in place for infrastructure and everything, but once, you know, when does it expire, right? It just never does, the EDU lives forever, so, I mean, yeah, and if I, if I use something, I pay for it, but if I don't, I shouldn't have to pay for it, and the EDU just doesn't allow that. So, if, I, I like where you're going there and as long as that's not putting a burden on North Beach or on someone else and it's just a more accurate way of getting that data, I'm all about it.
And there was several, I will say, tests completed, smoke tests, things of that nature that were done to ensure that we weren't getting any water into the actual sewer lines to make sure that that was counted against us or them. So, there was a lot of work done preparatory-wise before we even got to this point here, and then we rechecked it after we basically got a hold of the line sharing agreement. So, we're, we're, we said, I'll just say we double-checked and triple-checked ourselves so far on the actual flows themselves.
I'll make a motion for the board president to sign the attached North Beach, North Beach Line Sharing Agreement on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve and authorize the board president to sign the recommended North Beach Line Sharing Agreement. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. President, it would be, it would be a thing that I have to excuse myself from, but that may be something that the board may want to look into in the future.
For others.
Is, is how EDUs are applied.
Yep. So, next item on the agenda, new business, item four, Department of Human Resources Director
Good morning, Commissioners, Melanie Woodson, Human Resources Director.
Good morning, Sharon, and I, as we do.
So, Sharon and I both are coming to you with a joint memo this morning regarding a voluntary retirement incentive program. Background, in April 2021, staff contracted with Bolton Partners, the county's actuary, to complete a study to determine the estimated impact on the actuarial determined contribution for the employee's retirement plan if a voluntary retirement incentive plan was offered to eligible employees of the plan. Discussion, there are 25 employees who are eligible for normal retirement in the employee's retirement plan. Fiscal impact, should all eligible employees decide to retire as of December 19, 2021, the incentive payment would equal $779,000. The source of funds for this incentive would come out of the plan assets, which has been approved by the Employee's Retirement Plan Board of Trustees. Bolton Partners has indicated that the annual actuarially determined contribution would be reduced by $188,300 if these employees retired or entered into the Deferred Retirement Option Program as of December 19, 2021. Conclusion, recommendation, staff seeks authorization to offer a retirement incentive to eligible employees to retire or enter the drop from the Calvert County Employees Retirement Plan and move forward with a plan amendment to facilitate payment from plan assets. The incentive we are recommending is $1,000 per year of service for any eligible full-time employee and $500 per year of service for any eligible part-time employee. Any discussion?
Okay, I'll go. So, obviously, when business does this, it's to get rid of the higher, typically, to get rid of the higher-paid employee, to bring in a lower-paid employee, typically, and I'm not saying that's what this is, but I'm just looking at why, what's the incentive? Why are we doing this? I mean, because we're hiring people all the time, so obviously, there's a shortage of manpower, but if we're encouraging people to, to leave, why?
Certainly, so we are not trying to get rid of our highest-paid employees. What we are doing is we see the value in the employees who are participants in this particular plan, it is a closed plan, it is a very rich plan. The employees coming into Calvert County government now are being entered into the T-Row price, which is a 401A.
Right, not deferred comp or whatever, what is it called again, the?
This one is a defined.
Defined benefit, that's right, there it is, yeah.
Yes, and those employees will receive a pension annuity. This plan, the actuary has determined that by providing an incentive for the employees who are eligible to retire now, it will save the county money because the retirement now is more cost-effective than allowing that monthly annuity.
It's always money, I just was just trying to figure out where it's, I mean, yeah, it's always.
The monthly annuities, the, the rate at which they will increase, it will cost the county far more money than it would cost the county.
So, it's cheaper to pay them to go home than, than, and hire new, basically?
Correct.
Because the defined plan ended in 1999?
Is it 1999, Sharon, or 1998? Yes.
And this would be on top of the drop, so they could get this and then still go in the drop so that the target would be basically three years from now, anybody wanted to do this, if they participated in both, would be cycled through.
Correct, so you could have an employee who just says, I'll go ahead and enter the drop in December, they would work for us for three more years, but they would have to leave the drop program at the end of the three years.
Do we have any numbers on what the savings would be?
Yeah, it's in the, it's in the memo, it's $188,000 a year, so.
If that, but if that's, that's if they all go in, right?
Yes, if they all go.
If they all in it, it'll be $188,000 per year that, that we would have, we would not have to put into the.
And that includes the cost of replacement employees, right? That's all factored in all that, right?
No, this number does not factor in the cost of replacement.
Because, I mean, obviously, we're saving money with them not being here anymore, but there's going to be a backfill.
Right, this is just the savings in the benefit package alone, just in the benefits. So, that is.
Okay, so, do we, do we know what, say, Person A goes? We know there's a savings because Person A is gone, but then we replace Person A.
But there might not be a salary savings necessarily because, you know, if a director leaves.
Salaries are steady going up.
If your director leaves, a deputy steps up, they make the same money.
Right.
So, when they fill that position, it's not like private industry, you know, there's really not going to be a salary savings if someone leaves, because somebody's going backfill that position at pretty much the same salary.
Correct, now.
Or in some cases, more.
You would have to keep in mind that anyone who's eligible to retire has worked for this, for the county for at least 30 years.
Right.
So, potentially, you would have some employees who are at step 25 on the pay scale, you could be backfilling those people with someone at a step one. So, there could be a minimal savings in salary.
But kind of to Commissioner Ann's point, yeah, because of the way the scale was set up. It would be apples to apples.
Pretty much.
Because, I guess, if I'm reading it right, the cost is $779,000 to do so.
Yes, and that money would be taken from the plan assets.
And then, basically, you're saying it would pay itself in, what, four years, would pay it back? If, am I doing that right?
Yeah, if everybody went at the same time, yes, in four years, you'd pay it back.
And then, and then the thought process is, is then after that, it would just be a true savings, I guess, is what.
Commissioners, also, if you consider that the policy that's already in place, when a position is vacated, not a contract position, but a merit position, if that position is filled, it's filled with a maximum of 6% at this point. So, if we had recently a, an employee that left Planning and Zoning, was a grade 26, was a step 20-something, was replaced by a grade 26, step five or six or seven, because that's the, that's where the 6% increase put them. So, that savings between the two is what either is absorbed, maybe there's an adjustment within the department, but if not, it rolls back into the general fund at the end of the year. So, that, there are, there is true savings here. The one has nothing to do with the, the benefit savings, it's just the grade savings when somebody departs with a, a high tenure.
So, obviously, this is your team and you've got a lot of really good folks, like there's some folks that are sitting in here right now that I'm going to cry when they leave because I know what a good job that they do and.
We're looking to get rid of none of them.
And are you prepared to walk down this road, I mean?
You know who's safe, you know who's safe is deployment inspector.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of talent, there's a lot of talent that's seen a whole lot, I mean, so I would, I would mind that we go into that with that thinking as well. If all of a sudden, 25 people said, I don't even worry about the drop, go. So, I just caution, you know, I keep going back to Commissioner Nutter all the time, you think you're doing something good over here and then what you do over there, so I'm all about if I can help the employee and save the taxpayers money, but at the same time, the show must always go on, so.
But contract employees don't go in the drop program, right?
They can.
Oh, they can.
But in response, Commissioners, the idea is that you, what the Commissioners have already done over the last eight or nine months, really, when you've provided, say, a stipend for, or not a stipend, but when you increase the ability for spouses to be covered on a retiree.
Sure, you started to set the stage for that, right?
Well, the point is, is that a lot of folks were, were hanging on because they couldn't afford to go out there and pay the additional money, so that was.
It was the right thing to do, I stand behind that, I, I really do, I, I mean, you.
This is a financial move for the county, for the program itself, the wagon doesn't stop, if someone chooses to retire with this in mind, I mean, that's their choice to do so, if they're hanging on just because they.
And the only reason I bring that up is a cautionary tale is you can't drive down the road without seeing a help wanted sign. I've never seen, and it's a country problem, I mean, you see it in shipping, there's no one to unload ships, I mean, manufacturing, I mean, it is a huge, huge, countrywide issue of trying to find bodies.
Unfortunately for us, we do have certain positions that just are hard to fill, for an example, the 911 Center, those are just positions that are hard to fill, but to date, we have not had an issue recruiting for our positions.
Look how long it took to get the plumbing inspector, like.
That is true, the plumbing inspector, it did take a while.
So, and, and so, you know, I mean, I wish just nothing but the best intentions with this document, but I just want us to be all eyes open that.
Well, I was driving here this morning, heard there's a job fair on T-Bone and Heather this morning for, what, Thursday, right?
Thursday, right. Probably nobody shows. In the past, it'd be a line around a back.
Well, maybe we, we ought to keep an eye out, see if any of our employees show up at that, and then we'll know they were going to probably take this deal.
Well, I'll have some paperwork for them when they get. No, I will say on the, you know, so the plumbing, or the trades inspectors, it's kind of a, a unique when it comes to plumbing and electrical, because what you're asking those individuals to do is to shelve their certification. So, that, that document that got them in the line of electricity or plumbing inspection, they can no longer use that to go out and work in Calvert County, so you're, you're giving up that.
Right, no, it's just a huge ask.
That's why when you, when you look at the average age of inspectors that come in and those traits, they're always going to be older because they're at the point where they're ready to shelve that certification requirement and then go back to work for the county government.
So, and we need to keep in mind, as Melanie said, these employees have been with us for 30 years, in most cases already, so they're already starting to think.
Correct.
And their benefit is continuing to grow.
Yes.
So, for them, it's a matter of, okay, how long am I going to stay? And my benefit's going to keep growing, or do I go out now because I'm going to get this little bonus?
Right.
And this plan is closed for a reason.
Oh, absolutely, corporate America, who has to make it balance, right? They knew it was unsustainable.
Yeah.
When I was on the Board of Ed, we did it three years in a row and saved a lot of money.
Okay.
A lot of money.
But, you know, at the end of the day, it's the employee's decision.
Right.
They're at that stage anyway, they're not going to go look for another job if they've been working for us for over 30 years.
They had enough.
Hopefully, they're going to enjoy life.
Right.
And certainly, we will educate employees, I've had employees contact me enthusiastic about the opportunity, but we would certainly not pressure any employee to submit their retirement, this is just an option.
And that was my thing too, yeah, I just, yeah, completely, and I know you would never would.
No.
You know, I just, um.
Do we have final say, can we approve whether they can or not?
That's a really good.
Yeah, on, on certain people, can, can we, uh?
I thought we passed the motion, she couldn't. This is a one-time, this is a one-time offer, this isn't a, something that's going to be put out there again and again without approval, right?
The proposal today is for yes, a one-time.
A one-time offer.
Correct.
Is there, would you want to take all 25 if they decided to leave, or would you want to cap it at the first 15?
We would want to take all 25 if they decided to leave.
Yeah, I don't think legally you could do that, offer it to some and not others, right?
You could.
They've done it in the first.
Yeah, you probably could, but it wouldn't be right, no.
All right. Any other discussion? Wait a minute, do I have a motion?
We haven't even made a motion yet.
Okay. Sometimes I get lost. So, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second that we adopt the early retirement incentive program to eligible employees. Any other discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Steve, you're not eligible, I know you've been here a long time, you're not eligible for this.
That's right, you're going nowhere.
Straighten my curls out.
Item number four under new business, Department of Human Resources. Oh, sorry, I didn't check it off my list. Item number five, Department of Economic Development, College of Southern Maryland.
That's what I had.
Good morning, Dr. Murph.
Morning.
Good morning. Pleasure's one.
Good, uh, yeah, still good morning, Commissioners, Kelly Robertson, Slagel, Director of Economic Development. And I am joined here this morning, uh, with Dr. Maureen Murphy, the President of the College of Southern Maryland. And, um, I am here to read the memo for the Commissioners Care Scholarship. Background, earlier this year, the College of Southern Maryland approached the Board of County Commissioners with a proposal to establish the Commissioners Care Scholarship Program to provide scholarships for student residents of Calver County admitted and enrolled at the College of Southern Maryland. The Board of County Commissioners voted unanimously to support this request, which will help enhance the accessibility of higher education for the residents of Calver County. Discussion, two hundred and twenty-five thousand was approved in the FY twenty-two adopted budget to specifically fund the new scholarship. In addition, a formal memorandum of understanding between the county and the College of Southern Maryland has been developed to clearly delineate responsibilities and expectations. Both parties have reviewed and agreed to the terms of the MOU and it will be in effect from the date of signature through June twenty-twenty-two. Fiscal impact, two hundred and twenty-five thousand is allocated in the FY twenty-two adopted budget. Recommendation, I recommend that you authorize the Board President to sign the Commissioner Cares Scholarship MOU. I'll take any questions, or we can move forward.
Mi- Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion so we can start discussion.
Well, I was gonna ask Dr. Murphy if she wanted to say anything first, but.
Absolutely. I, I, it, it's been interesting listening to this meeting.
I'm glad to hear that.
It is. And I, I just wanted to tell you what this scholarship means. Right now, our students are struggling to continue. This is to keep them going. And I really think it's been amazing how much just a little bit of money works to motivate them to keep them going. This will probably hit over four hundred, maybe up to four hundred and fifty students. That's a big impact. And I'd love to remind the Commissioners that ninety percent of our graduates stay here in Southern Maryland and work here. So that pipeline you were worried about, Commissioner Hunt, we're right there. We also train people in building inspections, so, you know, we're, we're ready. We're ready for you, so we can help.
Get some more trained.
Some more plumbing inspectors.
But this is really powerful, because right now our students are really struggling. They've had to juggle a lot over the past fifteen months. And you are sending a signal, the Calver County Board of Commissioners really cares about them and their progress. So I, I'm just grateful. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Gadway, did you have something to say?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion so we can start discussion. Like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second that we approve the Commissioners Care Scholarship MOU. Discussion on that motion.
Has this been in effect in previous years?
No, this is the first time we have done it.
Gotcha.
But you did do it last year on your own, did you not?
Do it last?
Yes.
We did it last year on our own, and one of the things that we, which is why, why we came forward, we found that ninety-six percent of the students who took advantage of it were successful. It's a huge motivator. You don't see those kinds of outcomes very often.
Good.
Good.
Good. And I believe we could use recovery funds to cover the two hundred and twenty-five thousand?
Yes, sir, we were able to find funds within, uh, existing, uh, provided grants.
Very good. Any other discussion on the motion? So I have a motion and a second to authorize the Board President to sign the Commissioners Care Scholarship MOU. Any other discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So we're gonna sign right now, aren't we?
Yes.
Come on up.
Is this like one of those famous moments where, um, like the pen gets immortalized?
I need a dozen pens, because I'm supposed to use one with each letter. And they're all fighting over the pen.
Right.
Make sure he's not, make sure he's not using the disappearing ink one.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
No, you're, you're good. I left that one home today.
Looks like a peace treaty being signed.
It is.
No, that would be with the Board of Ed.
Thank you so much. Thank you. You bet. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm seeing you. I can't tell you how good it feels to see you.
We know the feeling. So the next item on the agenda is a work session, Office of the County Administrator.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mark Willis County Administrator, to my right, Sharon Strand, Acting Director of Finance and Budget. Today, uh, I'll read a memo for you, but it's basically the grant monies that have been provided through the Treasurer's Office. And the intent is to express how or a recommendation for you to approve as, for expenditure of said money. Background information. By signature of President Biden, sixty-five point one billion in direct federal aid to America's counties was authorized. The U.S. Treasury will oversee the administration of this funding and has since released interim rules and regulated guidance for the execution of this funding. Discussion, Calver County has received eight point nine million dollars to date and will receive an additional eight point nine million, uh, in early calendar year twenty-twenty-two for a total amount of seventeen point eight million dollars. Here's some key dates to offer, uh, that, that guide us. August thirty-first is a deadline to submit the first interim report to the U.S. Treasury. That's made quite simple because we deliberately, uh, did not go out and start spending money without coming before the Board and before the citizens to make sure that, uh, we were on the right track. October thirty-first is a deadline for counties to submit the first quarterly project and expenditure report. And again, because we'll be so new into the program of expenditures, uh, we don't see that as a challenge either. December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four, funds must be incurred and obligated. They must be encumbered for those particular projects that you wish to execute. December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-six, funds must be expended to cover obligations and all work must be completed. The Fiscal Recovery Fund was established to help turn the tide on the pandemic, address its economic fallout, and lay the foundation for a strong and equitable recovery. There are five primary ways that counties may invest funds. Support public health response, address negative impact or economic impacts, replace public sector revenue loss, premium pay for essential workers, water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. And within that category, there is a subcategory that includes stormwater infrastructure and specifically as it may be related to, uh, environmental concerns or environmental impact. And of course, we can all ad- admit that saving the bay is always a, a goal in mind. Fiscal impact, all funding, all funding and the execution of the American Rescue Plan is provided by the U.S. Treasury. So long as the funding is administered in accordance with the interim final rules guidance, there will be no cost to the county. Conclusion, recommendation. It is requested the Board of County Commissioners consider the recommend, the recommended use of ARPA funding, provide additional changes or guidance, and then direct staff and then direct the Office of the County Administrator to carry out the proposed use of funds. With that, I have a seemingly a rather lengthy, uh, PowerPoint presentation. It's not that lengthy because, uh, when reaching out to the department heads and asking for their input by department, those that felt they needed funding this round, uh, they provided a hundred and three million dollars of requests balanced against roughly eighteen million dollars available. So there was plenty to look at and, and kinda choose from. Before I go through the slide presentation, I, I, I really, I think, uh, the idea of how we came up with, uh, these particular items to recommend, you know, we looked at, uh, the, the category rules that were just described. But basic concepts when considering this. So at all times, funding was reflected against approved use in the funding category, uh, relevancy guide. Uh, each item was reviewed for its ability to substantially reduce the impact of the budget, st- uh, on the budget, starting in fiscal year twenty-twenty-four. Very little impact, uh, that made financial, a- and therefore I say political sense because we're always worried about doing the right thing politically as well as financially. Uh, the, for example, a road, if we bonded a road, we would only be able to account for one fifteenth of the money that we spent on that road during fiscal year twenty-four. If you consider a water and sewer project, they're bonded for, uh, twenty-five years. So therefore, we would only be able to count one twenty-fifth in fiscal year twenty-four, or twenty-five, or twenty-six. So the impact is not as great as we might think it is, or could be. Each item was revised, was reviewed for the likelihood that future federal grant funding would allow for substantial revenue to address other items. So the example here is that any of the items that we have in here uh, for stormwater management or for water and sewer, et cetera, uh, in the new grant that is being considered right now in the Senate, uh, if that is approved, then some of what we have in here would be covered by that particular new grant. And I think the fact that we have laid, that this is laid out over multiple years, we always have the ability to come back and update, uh, how we're spending this particular funding. So we go, we go on a little bit more in the spun, the, the, uh, spending or spreading the funding to have the largest impact across the departments, including the Health Department, which initially depends on the county for funding. They may receive funding in the future, and Doc Polsky can talk directly to that, but certainly we have an understanding that we'll consider any monies that they get based on monies that we provide. Selecting projects that have the biggest impact on the largest potential population. Example, using funding to improve a rather small stormwater issue, say, at Hughes Farm versus one at one of the major parks. Certainly, we would like to have the greatest impact on one of the major parks and one of the smaller parks out, uh, in the more rural part of the county. A contingency of one million dollars was also put in the third year for, uh, Public Works. And the reason for that, uh, stormwater management is critical to this county. It just, uh, tears our roads up. It, it provides a huge customer service concern for our citizens traveling these roadways. Uh, Public Works has received less than, sounds like a lot of money, but less than a million dollars a year to maintain, uh, almost five hundred miles of roadway, which means right-of-way on each side of that road and all the, the multiple, uh, pipes and, and ditch lines and structures that go with that. So we put that funding in there, a million dollars for each of the three years that we can, we have to expend that funding so that they could really and truly address the stormwater management issues in this county on public right-of-way. This is not private property. This is public right-of-way that we're talking about. So with that said, uh, before I go into the actual presentation itself, are there any questions from the Board? Okay, thank you, gentlemen. So if we look at the first one, as we go through this slide, as we go through the slide presentation, there are a lot of projects on here. If the project is in green, it was recommended. If it is not in green, I left it there for the Commissioners to see. Some of these I don't think are, were appropriate if you dig down into the criteria, but they would likely be appropriate for the next round of grant money coming from the Treasurer. So the first one is a legal database expansion for the County Attorney's Office. That's, will assist the County Attorney's Office in the execution of their duties. That was accepted. Under the Department of Community Resources, there were three major areas. Uh, the first one, nonprofit grants, we rec- we are recommending two hundred thousand dollars in year, fiscal year twenty-three and twenty-four for a total of four hundred thousand. And staff is in the audience if you have specific questions for them as well. Uh, but that funding is really designed to help our nonprofits continue of the work that they, that they do out there as a partner with Calver County Government. We cannot do it all. They cannot do it all, so it's really a partnership between the two. This funding is to help, uh, replace some of that revenue that they couldn't even go out and try to fundraise for. Number two for, uh, Community Resources is End Hunger Grant. Certainly, that's a project that's near and dear to the county. It's, it's not only a service to, to those that need food on a regular basis, but it's also, uh, the county has gone into an agreement with, uh, the End Hunger Program that they become a, uh, a major resource during a natural disaster within Calver County. Uh, we've certainly helped them in the past. This is an attempt to, to help them. It doesn't pay the full amount that they're looking for. They will have to find additional monies, but, uh, the amount of five hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, uh, should go towards, is recommended towards that one point eight seven six million.
You know, I guess, Mark, philosophically, since our great, great, great grandkids are gonna be the one paying this back.
Yes, sir.
We should take an approach that it's not putting the Band-Aid on it today because if we're just putting a Band-Aid on something that wants this COVID money, because it's not real, right? Two years ago, this was not in the pipeline. This was not a thought. It's not real. We should be able to handle our budget on what we do day-to-day. Um, it ought to be something that the next generation can say, well, that money was spent on something that I'm still using today. I think would be my only two cents of that. I mean, it's, um, I, I'm just speechless, the amount of money. And we're such a small jurisdiction, and what are we looking at over two years roughly?
Eighteen million.
Eighteen million dollars in one of the smallest counties in the state of Maryland. It's, it's unbelievable. It truly is. I, I don't know how anybody who would big-picture this could conceive that the American public, public could ever pay this back. But you just go to the Treasury and just keep printing it, you know, and you put any label on it to justify it. So that would be the only thing I ask is that we could sleep at night with how we spend this money.
A- absolutely, Commissioners, and I will say that that was probably one of the hardest tasks in coming up with this list because, you know, the, the guidance for how you can utilize these fun, this funding is, uh, you know, support public health response is listed as number one. Address negative im- and, and I read this earlier on, but it's support public health response. That's not something that you're gonna be able to touch, but it's gonna be something that is gonna have a lasting impact a- as we worked with children or their parents or whomever. But that's, uh, again, you won't be able to touch that, you know, five years from now, but you'll be able to see that, that child or, you know. So, you know, address the negative, uh, economic impacts. I know, uh, Director Slagel's in the background for Economic Development. Uh, just the fact that folks may be struggling to pay a water bill because they, they did get some assistance, but the assistance helped to take care of their staff. This is another example of economic monies that might be in here are to help our economic base stay, one, maybe stay afloat, but maybe also thrive at the same, same time because we do need that revis- revenue source in the future to do exactly what you said. And that is to hope that our budget, our budget is able to handle this going forward.
What I got taught when I first got here, somebody would approach us with something. Terry Shannon would say to me, well, remember, that's reoccurring debt. It's not a one-time thing. And that still holds true. So if something can't sustain in a fair environment, now, I'm not saying something that was impacted because of government restrictions or mandates or COVID-related, but if it can't stand on its own during normal things, you know, I caution the Band-Aid approach.
Sure, understood, and a- a- as we go through this, there are, uh, items that are pa- that are re- being recommended to be paid for. Uh, some of them are lost revenue, so again, you're not gonna be able to touch that going forward. Uh, but some would be, say, a water tower. But even in that, uh, although we, we will help to pay for that if approved, that system then pays for itself with the citizens that are on that system, so it doesn't come back and need from the general fund.
And that's something that, that you can, you know, but that's the only thing I caution you to, because, you know, you, you would hope that there's great behavior across the board out here. We can only control what we have here to deal with, but that's just the, and this isn't the last we're gonna see of this. Any, any administrations can come out and, people love a check. Who don't love money coming in the door, you know? I mean, but that goes all back to what we said earlier. Why is there so many job openings right now? Somebody has to pay the bill at some point, and I just don't want Calver County to set itself up for failure because we did something that down the road, we just can't pay for.
A- and I believe that this, uh, it is indicative of one-time payments that we're not gonna have to come back. And when I see in here, and, and I'll point them out, when it did, when it was recommended to me that way, I looked at it differently and I made a proposition, uh, to present to the Board of County Commissioners, so it's your choice. So if it's gonna be a continuing cost going forward, that'll be identified. And that'll be because there's truly a long-term need for that, that this could only help us get there, but it's, this is not the answer. It's only the prelude to us doing it on our own. So it just kinda helps us to get there. So, uh, next we have the Calver County Health Department, uh, revenue loss in the school system, the telehealth program, and revenue loss for behavioral health in general. Again, these are all items that clearly, if you look at the, uh, the one, two, four, five, for example, under number one, two, and three, those are the specific areas of guidance that they had to try to match. So this is an area where i- in every case, they were. So this is an area where in every case, they were able to match four of the requirements to actually request that funding and, and us be able to defend giving them that funding. So you have the revenue loss school system. The recommended amount is 789,000, which is just, just shy of what was asked for in fiscal year 22, in fiscal year 23, 100,000. And these are programs, again, that support the, you know, this, it's not, it, it says school system, but it's the, the Department of the Health side of that that go, that goes into the school system and helps our youth. The second one is the telehealth, get on the phone, get on the computer, do what you need to do. That has been impacted. So we are recommending that entire amount of 194,786 dollars. Revenue loss, behavioral health, same thing, 413,196 dollars is being recommended. Department of Human Resources, premium pay for non-teleworking employees. So there are a thousand different ways that this can be addressed. We looked at across the county payroll, those that would meet the criteria according to the plan. It's very specific that you should, that we should consider paying the absolute lowest pay grades of employees first, and only if we had revenue beyond that, we should consider. It doesn't say that you have to pay that class or this class or that group or the other group. It's that you should look at those that make the least amount of funding and are the most impacted. But it also does go out to say, you know, that if these individuals were constantly in harm's way fro, as a result of coronavirus, not just their job, but their job put them in the proxen, proximity of catching the virus. For me, one of the best examples are fire rescue folks. You know, you go out there and you're, you're in the back of an ambulance day, all day long, and you're taking folks to the hospital that have COVID and you know that. They clearly meet their criteria. So we did look at it from a legalistic standpoint also, so that we understood the language of who to call essential. And that's still, so the $2 million that we are showing here is $2 million that we would look at across the board and try to fit staff into that 2 million. It doesn't mean that the board can't apply more. It doesn't mean that the board can't tell me less. But we haven't decided yet that actual dollar amount. But again, money is finite. We don't have, it's not just flowing through the building. So it's something that we will continue to look at. And Director of, of Human Resources, Melanie Woodson, has certainly been on top of this and has looked at it from many different angles, so. Department of Parks and Rec, this was the one, the biggest one here is Breezy Point. It's a revenue loss that, for consideration, and they had a lot of revenue loss. But I looked at, you know, the past, previous year, we already passed that. You know, and, and I could say that for natural resources as well. They're already past one of those years. They've survived that, and they're going to survive that because the county is going to make sure they survive it. But at the same time, I have a situation in Parks and Rec where they have equipment for a park that's been approved, that's actually under construction, and they can't even afford to buy the equipment for it because of lost revenue across the board.
Well, that's a great, that is a great example. We lost a lot of revenue with that. It impacted, I don't know that we had a department impacted worse than Shannon, barring on it. I mean, but, you know, I mean, but, and that's a great example right there to kind of.
And, and this is a material item that you can buy. It, it's, it's not a one-time purchase because obviously, equipment has a lifespan to it. But this is, uh, this is a material object that she couldn't. I'm not saying she will because it's, you know, this is lost revenue. But she has asked me to approach the Board of County Commissioners for a budget adjustment because she needs several hundred thousand dollars to buy the equipment for an entire park. And she doesn't have that funding. So this would allow her to purchase that funding if, if she could make that adjustment and not have to come to the Board of County Commissioners for current general fund money to put for, toward that. So it would eliminate that money from coming from the budget somewhere else.
Are we talking about Ward Farm or?
Yes, sir, we are. Yes, sir. This is, this equipment is for Ward Farm and Park. And, you know, obviously, there are very specific type mower heads and tractors that you need to, to groom the fields to the standards that are, are you, mostly our youth are looking to use. So continued with Parks and Recreation. We had looked at in the, the language HVAC is in there and can be defended from the standpoint that air infiltration improvements, help with coronavirus, obviously. But the second part of that is that it, it's where citizens congregate in large concentrations. So any community, community center in my mind is one of those areas. It can become a, a location for those during heat, those during extreme cold, those during an evacuate, whatever the case, we would be pulling folks into that. And that's aside from their everyday use of the community center. So to be able to put 1.5 million dollars towards the Heb Community Center when we're short funding there anyway, by estimate, by estimate. So right now, the Commissioners made that tough decision. Provides 6 million dollars of, of funding. That does not count against the bonding. It does not count against the budget. This is another 1.5. The initial estimate was 7.5 million. It could end up being a little bit more, it could be a little bit less. But this is a way to help fund that where we, we don't incur that cost also going down the road. The BG&E water well or field well, that's a, an area that's been, I won't say neglected, but it's, it's such a small area. It's needed a well for a long time just to take care of the, the fields. They deserve to have, the children and the, the adults that go there, I think deserve to have the same quality of fields that we have on our bigger fields. This is a step towards that as well. Parks and Recs just won't give up. So we, we have some stormwater as well. This is one of those areas where, you know, many years ago, we, we, we kind of snuck around legally by way of using our in-house highway maintenance crews. And, and we would pay them overtime because it was some additional work that we could get them small jobs here and there. But, you know, we have contractors that are much more efficient at it. This would allow us to do some of the stormwater management work, both at Hallen Point Park, Regional Park, Flag Ponds, which is very frequented by the public, and the stormwater at Battle Creek as well. Those areas are high-traffic areas by visitation by the citizens. So there are a lot of them on there. If you go to page 15, you know, we didn't do roadways because we think that roadways and additional stormwater management will be in this next round of, and I hate to say it, Commissioner Hart, because here we are, and again, we're just coming back with more money that my granddaughter is going to be helping to pay off. But it is what it is, and we need to take advantage of it today. And this is something that we hope that if we don't use it here, we're going to use it during the next round and take care of that.
I mean, globally, you just hope that every jurisdiction is of that mindset, that reckless spending shouldn't just be condoned. You know, that at least you, you put it to good usage.
And for this here stormwater, we can actually, you know, that we have an MS4 permit, which is for the public. It's just a permit that requires us to revitalize our, our stormwater management collection systems and convey it more gently to the bay, removing that nitrogen, that sort of, that, that causes damage in the bay if it gets there. All of these play into that as well. So not only does it take care of erosion and stormwater management at the parks, it also takes care of some of our permit requirements as we go into the future. Let's see. The Calver County Detention Center, the COVID-19 has brought about kind of a, a, I don't, I won't say it's new because certainly there's been at-home detention. But the level at which it's being incorporated now is much greater. And it's, I think they've learned from it over the past 18 months. They're incorporating in, uh, home detention, not just statewide, but on a national level. And this is an attempt to really refine that position. So it was asked for three years. I recommended that, my recommendation is that we give one year to test it and to make sure that it's what we truly need. And then if we need it, then it actually goes in the budget cycle and we pay for it that way because it would be a long-term goal, but it would be something that's, that's needed.
It's a lot cheaper.
Yeah. And it's cheaper in the long run and, you know, the, the cost savings, I'm not aware of. What I am aware of is the due diligence that our officers have to track these folks.
It should be what, 38,000 a year per inmate, I think was the number at one point?
38,000 a year?
Bobbing his head, is that?
It was.
Yep.
It's gone up.
It's gone up.
It, it's going up. And, and I guess that, I want to make the point here that I am only recommending one year, but I am recommending that we give due consideration for that single position going forward in the budget. And it may be as easy as a readjustment of an existing position, but that's to be determined as we get into the program and just see how it works.
So that would be a contract position?
I don't know that it will, but we haven't gotten that. Oh, yes, yes.
So if we've only funded it for one year, you'd have to do it under a contract.
Yes, I mean, we could do that under contract going forward, or we can have staff obviously figure out the best approach to that.
There may be somebody on hand already, depending how extensive the program is. I don't know anything about it.
And Major Reese is familiar with that. We spoke earlier. The idea is that let's get an idea of what the true impact is. And then if we need it, we need it. And if we don't, we don't. But I didn't want to dedicate three years of funding to that.
Right, so, so I was just saying, you started out as a contract. If, if they've got the rep funds and they want to give up a position and convert somebody that's already there, that's up to them, but.
I mean, you, you would think in theory, say, if you had less inmates. But, you know, I don't know. I mean, you know, because you, you're dealing with coverage, right? But then also too, you know, it's, so we don't know the numbers, but it's worth exploring.
And, and that, Lord knows I'm stepping out on a limb here when I say if this program works as, as well as we think it may, we may have two or three of these folks in the coming years. And our onsite retention may be less, and maybe there are less staff. But I certainly, I doubt it, but it is a possibility with, you know, how the program works out.
Because we don't know the current vacancy rate at the detention center, do we?
We do not, but we can get that.
So there may be an opportunity for them to shift the position if it's a high priority.
Sure. And, and it was mentioned, I mean, in discussions, it was mentioned that it could be an in-house person that, that would stay, or it could be a, an additional person that comes in to handle the workload. But that's, I wanted to provide at least this to give us an option to take a look at it for the next year.
You know how work-intensive it is. I mean, with today's technology, it may, you know.
I just, I share Commissioner's heart concern about ongoing costs using these funds because we know they're only here for two years and then they're gone. And this is the first item that's popped up that could be.
That, that's right.
It could be a recurring cost.
And I wanted to identify that straight up, that this is one that I, I didn't, my gut was that three years was maybe long for it. We had a discussion, and I think we can probably incorporate a, an existing position that would be a lot less than this going forward.
Right, maybe it's a cost-saving measure.
But we'll know that, I think with, certainly within six months to a year as we go into this next budget cycle so that Sharon and her staff can account for that position if need be. Department of Economic Development, we have, I think, you know, what Kelly was so successful at with the, the CARES funding was.
Did you skip 17?
Did I? Which is.
Broadband.
Yeah, I figured you didn't care about that anymore.
What?
No, yeah, I did. I skipped broadband. So broadband is one of those that's, you know, heavy into the program. You, two weeks ago, you met with Chris Comer from Comcast that came in. The Deputy Administrator Linda Fasallo has worked with Comcast and is, has this completely mapped out. I say completely with a little bit of caution. We have citizens right now that don't want to connect to the system. We can't make them do that. So this funding here is to run the major trunk lines, to make the connections to those that will accept it. And, you know, if two years go by and this money goes away, then I, it'll be the Commissioner's pleasure as to how we may help those that change their mind. But right now, this 3.2 million dollars, 16, 1.6 million over two years or two consecutive years, has already been calculated to cover our cost, Calver County's cost with grants from Comcast to connect everybody that we're aware of in Calver County. We're going to find a few here and there, and we're ready to make adjustments. But that's what this funding is for.
With Friday's, with the Governor's announcement on Friday to push separate monies down for broadband, how would that affect this? Can that other money be used and this money be freed up for something different?
Well, so we, in a, Linda, feel free to jump in. But, you know, we've been working with Comcast for quite a while, and we've already switched out money one time. We had money from the general fund that we switched out for this money, so it didn't impact the general fund. I'm not saying we can't. We might get to that point where we're already starting to use part of that 1.6 million. But if this new, when this new money comes out, it's 65 billion dollars just for broadband, high-speed internet alone.
Right.
So the 3.2 trillion that you're hearing about, 65 billion is dedicated to broadband, high-speed internet. Now, unfortunately, Calver County is not getting the 65 billion.
For us, phase two is getting high speed. Because the 3.2 million only gets us broadband to individual homes. And we already had a discussion with Chris, at least I did, about starting to talk about the next phase, which is to get high speed, maybe not to every house, but at least scattered enough throughout Calver County to get the business community hooked up and schools and all those kinds of places. So that's the next, for me, that's the next phase. And that's what the dedication is for that next pot of money.
It is. So in discussions with Director Lawson, our, our Director of Technology Services, I asked why, aside from this, which we kind of put this in anyway, this, this 3.2 million, why there was no request on her part? And she's gearing up for that high-speed internet because this, she's already done a great job in getting the department where it needs to be with staffing for cybersecurity, et cetera. This is kind of the next level here that we're talking about. And then the next level is going to be that high speed, which we're hoping that our portion of that 65 billion dollars will help us accomplish. So we're saving that money for high speed. We're letting this money do the basic infrastructure for broadband.
It seems to me like we're way ahead of the curve here in Calver County in comparison to the rest of the state.
We really are. I mean, we are, and that, thanks go to Deputy Administrator and Comcast's involvement. I told her I had a little project for her, and she's been on it ever since. And, and it's been painful, I will say that, because we do run up against citizens that just, you know, they're either old-fashioned or for whatever reason. You know, they're comfortable with not having it. But by some folks not having it, it impacts us being able to efficiently or conveniently provide it to other folks that may be behind them. So anything that our citizens could do on behalf of high-speed internet and broadband coverage, certainly, we would appreciate that as well. So I think it's a team effort across the board, not just Comcast, not just the county government, but also our citizens are part of that team, and, and we all want to get there together. Make sure I'm on the right page. So that's the 1.6 million times two years. So Department of Public Works has a lot on here. I will tell you that most of what is here, I think, will clearly be covered in the next phase. It's going to be high on road.
Economic development, 18, 19.
Oh, yeah. You're throwing me off, I think, Commissioner.
Well, you skipped one.
Yeah, I started talking about how great Kelly Schlegel was, and so.
That would distract anybody, so.
Can we have enough time to do that? I mean, you know, that, that could take a while, I mean, you know.
So really, you know, I think until we're fully out of, out of this particular predicament we're in, I think, providing funding to our, our business, regardless of what type of business they are, something that Kelly and her staff and Community Resources and Finance and Budget, et cetera, and the County Attorney's Office have greatly provided a great deal of support for. I mean, a lot of whole, hand-holding. This will allow for a continuation of that. It's not as much money as she would have liked, and she let me know that. But it, I think it, it fits into what we can afford to do while still taking advantage of helping other areas within the county. And then there's a contracted grant coordinator position, which is not recommended for a. a contracted uh grant coordinator position, which is not recommended for a, a future budget, but it is recommended for one year and there is a tremendous amount of work that goes into these grants. And I should point this out, if, if you recall, we provided a CARES update, actually uh Sharon provide, provided that update a couple of weeks ago and it was the expenditure of the CARES funding, which keep in mind, the CARES funding that we provide, that were, we were provided was eight million, I think seventy-two thousand dollars. That morphed into over twenty million dollars that had to be accounted for through Economic Development, Community Resources, uh certainly Finance and Budget. And the reason for that expansion was we get money, the state gets money, they take their money and they divide it into these other little programs and they send that down to county staff or to Calver County, then we have to put that to use very specifically. It might be low-income housing, it might be hotels, it might be uh whatever, but the point is, is all of those are separate grants that we kind of have to apply for and make sure that we meet the criteria. So we went from eight million to over twenty million. This position is going to help manage that because uh I, I hate to say guarantee it, but I think we're going to get more money and you know, we're getting roughly eighteen million, but there are going to be a lot of uh other grants that are going to be filtered down to us and we need to be able to take advantage of that as well. So this is one of those positions and there's one more position that I'll show you here in a minute that uh speaks to the same issue. So now on to Public Works. Jeez.
Public safety?
They're not getting anything. No, the, the public safety is uh I think one of the easier ones. In fact, the, the Commissioners had directed us to do that a, a while back and it's to keep our uh EMS uh rescue folks out there taking care of our citizens. Not, you know, COVID has certainly impacted that community of the citizens in, in general, but also our ability to reach out there with dedicated rescue equipment is the reason that you're looking at this uh dollar amount. So that dollar amount is one million uh five hundred twenty-seven thousand dollars and that's going to get us through into the next year. So to get us past uh or at least up to uh July first of next fiscal year and it gives us time to, to kind of get those folks hired and onboard.
And that's coverage for how many departments?
Uh we have Al sitting back there, I believe, and Al can probably tell us exactly what that's for.
Good morning, Commissioners. Al Jeffrey, Deputy Director of Public Safety. What that, that fund will keep the additional transport unit in service at Solomon's, the additional uh medic unit in service at COW's, the additional transport unit that we're using temporary staffing on at Company Four and Company Five through June thirtieth, uh through the end of this fiscal year.
And, and Marco, on that topic, I know we've discussed it in the past, there's no provisions for the volunteers allowed in this money. Is that correct?
On your, Commissioner, you're speaking directly to the premium pay, the hazard pay.
Ambulance drivers, things of that nature.
We have not determined that, but we haven't given up on the idea either. Uh so you know, they're not on our.
They were there before everybody.
Yeah, they're not on our, our staffing rolls, obviously, but they're certainly part of the community. They're certainly part of what Al's folks have to do.
And they're not asking for any money.
They're not, they're not, and, and that, they're not.
They deserve it more than anybody.
I mean, they're, they're not asking for thing and, and you know, before the federal government, you know, acknowledged COVID or anything, they were out there. I mean.
Volunteering.
Yeah, so I mean, I, I know we've discussed it and, but.
We still have time to talk about that.
Good.
Yeah, so this, the, the layout that we have here is really designed to give us some flexibility. Uh you'll see that in the contingency of a million dollars at the very end of this presentation, since I can now actually start talking about Public Works. But uh, but the idea is that, uh you know, once we get into the first year and we start expending those monies, those monies are, they're encumbered, but for the second year, for the third year, uh and most of the money's upfront, but we don't have to pay all of it out at any given time. We can, we can pay part of it out and Sharon would be very happy to account for that as we go through it. Uh yeah, and just like, just like with CARES, uh I think they did a, a, a great job of accounting for where every penny went and that's why we came back and expressed that to the public. We, just by design, uh we will be doing a public hearing uh with this money adjustment, so we will be bringing that for you so that it actually reflects in the budget as we move forward. So, so for Public Works, like I said, there's a lot on there. A lot of the roads that are not in green are because I think they're going to be cut, we will be able to cover them in the upcoming uh monies that'll be made available. And it's specifically roads and infrastructure dedicated to roads. Uh that's uh bridges, for example.
Well, Dow Road's going to be done anyway.
Yes. This is all dedicated to Dow Road. Uh but what this is uh mostly is infrastructure repair. So it is those, those stormwater management issues that are endangering our existing roadway and, or endangering the bay as uh with runoff sediment. So the recommendation is that a million dollars for fiscal year twenty-two, a million dollars for fiscal year twenty-three, a million dollars for fiscal year twenty-four, with the caveat that that fiscal year twenty-four million dollars, since we won't touch it yet, is there as a contingency for the Board of County Commissioners to decide that you may want to do something different with that. We may execute a particular program uh for a director that's asked for something and you decide that you want to double the amount you gave that director or pay more of this or more of that. You'll have that million dollars to pull from as we go through the cycle. Anything that would be left at that point uh could certainly be turned over to uh Public Works. I will say that Public Works, like, they, they don't get a lot of money in the big picture for stormwater management. We have a lot of calls from uh our constituents to make repairs and this is a way to try to catch up as much as we can and with the next round of money, I think we should be able to absolutely do that. The final uh Public Works item, I believe, is uh the St. Leonard Water Tower. So I, I was careful in when considering that particular tower. It was a project that, taking no credit, it was a project that I had considered uh when I was the Deputy Director in Public Works and the Enterprise Funds. Uh St. Leonard does not have water uh redundancy, meaning if anything happens to that well, anything happens to that tower, all of our water users in the public are out of water. This was a, by design to give a second tower, more firefighting capabilities, more water to the public. Uh and I, I'm sure that Commissioner Weems knows because he made a point of telling me often that uh Mark, get a handle on how much water we have in St. Leonard because uh we really, until we put the meters on, we didn't realize how much we were bumping up against the allotted threshold by uh MDE. So this puts us uh well beyond that and I think able to provide water to the citizens well into the future.
Good.
Now, that one point, uh three million will not pay for the tower, but with uh grants that we get from Maryland Department of the Environment, et cetera, that will bring us, I think, right to the table of being able to not just build the tower, the well, but the connectivity that we need to join the systems together so that we could actually shut one tower down, drain it, paint it and still provide water to the citizens, which we can't do that today. So, nothing else for Public Works. The, the final page of the, under Department of Finance and Budget, that should be green. My mistake for not having it green. The Grant Staffing Plan, that's a, we have so many grants that are coming in uh and, and I have to, you know, Mary Lehman and Barbara Warner, uh Mary from Sharon's office and Barbara Warner from uh Jackie's office in Public Safety, I think they have to work around the clock to make sure that we're tracking all of these grants and all of these monies that seem to be going everywhere at the same time. You know, in the bigger picture, we're actually a small staff for the amount of money that we maintain. So the Grant Staffing would bring in a grant writer that could help us with the federal grants that are going to come down with any additional monies that we'll receive and there's no doubt we're going to receive them, but it would also help us in the execution of this money, uh but specifically grant writing. And then the second position, now that would be a, a temporary position. It's about the same. It was about eighty-four thousand dollars. And then the, the new position in accounts receivable, we could pay for that same way. We could, we could pay for that with a year of uh funding and then put that in the budget for the long term because the, the amount of wire transfers, the amount of actual documentation that has to be input and tracked in the system for what we just went through the last eighteen months is tremendous. And if there's ever been at least a little bit of friction known by me between departments, it was Kelly Schlegel sending me mean faces by text saying, I, I need help. Not, not so mean, but the idea is that it is multi-department and it, you know, so we put that workload when Kelly's folks put all of that stuff together by, not by design, but just it happens that that all gets dumped over here on uh Finance and Budget. Now they have to manage it and the thing is, is you know, customer service, sometimes I think you have to spend a little to have proper customer service and I've, I've said for twenty years, sometimes we provide the least customer service to our own staff. Then we, we provide better service to the public, which we should, but we provide the least amount of customer service to our own staff and I aim to fix that. And when a department has a responsibility for all these wire transfers, it's not their intent to dump it. They need to jump on that and they really don't have the resources to do that in a timely manner, which means that the backlog is on the citizens. If finance, if Economic Development can't get it done fast enough, Finance and Budget can't get it through fast enough, then it's the citizens, it's the businesses and the citizens that uh are the ones waiting for us to do our jobs and I'm trying to prevent that. So Commissioners, with that in mind, that's really the presentation uh of the Grant Staffing is, is eighty-four thousand, eighty-four thousand, and then the total amount is listed at eighteen million, three hundred and uh eighteen million, three thousand, one hundred and twenty-six dollars, which is over the allotted amount we have, but I'm pretty sure that we're going to kick something out along the way or it's going to come in cheaper. Uh but either way, uh that's the amount that we targeted with a contingency of one million dollars, which is five point six percent roughly at your disposal.
So that million is the million that was in DPW?
Yes, sir. That million is highlighted uh in DPW as the contingency. It's in the third year and it's there specifically so you have time to consider it.
And just for the record, Finance and Budget, we're approving a new position by adopting this plan.
That would be the request. Yes, sir.
Questions?
Obviously, this is just step one.
This is step one and there's another entire round of money coming. This money goes out to twenty-twenty-six. There's an entire new round of money coming that exceeds the dollar amount. The dollar amount that we're working on at the national level was sixty-five point one million dollars. The dollar amount that they're providing at the federal level for broadband alone is sixty-five million dollars.
Billion.
Billion.
Billion, yeah, with a B.
Think they could get pre-K in that, you know, so every mom and dad could drop their kid and start, you know, could they get pre-K in there?
It is in the next bill.
In the next bill.
They're going to finally have pre-K for every mom and dad?
It's in the next bill.
There's a, there's a lot in there and, and that's why, you know, I, I, I know that when we look at adding a new position, whether it's for the detention center or for Finance and Budget, uh the idea is, I think, that there's just so much potential backlog on some of this money because they're just dumping money, uh whether it's sixty-five billion dollars this time or three point two trillion dollars next time.
God forbid that, that a child starts getting an education, right, instead of just sitting there staring at a TV set because mom and dad don't have the resources for that or a single parent or what have you, um so.
Pre-K and the first two years of community college is in the next bill.
Or maybe teach them how to eat right, too.
So Commissioners, my request at this point is guidance, uh direction on would you like to change what you've just gone through? I know it's hot, fast-paced, but uh it's the.
Somewhere to start. It's a good start. Somewhere to start.
Somewhere to start. And like I said, it was designed uh so that we have time in between the years to kind of tweak it and as long as we update the plan by the, the interim rules and regulations and provide that quarterly after uh August thirty-first with the very first report, we, our first quarterly report is October thirty-first and then there'll be a quarterly report after that. We'll update the plan and update our expenditures as we go forward.
We're good?
Yes, sir.
Need a motion, Mr. Attorney? Just guidance. All right, I think we're good.
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So with that, brings us to public comment.
We did have four callers on the line six minutes ago, so if somebody's on the line would like to provide public comment, please press star nine. You'll be identified by the last four digits of your telephone number. If there's anybody in the audience who'd like to provide public comment today, please make your way to the microphone. You'll be asked to identify yourself and whether you're speaking as the designated representative of a group or as an individual. Designated representatives will have five minutes and individuals will have two.
Caller two eight zero three, we are ready to receive your comments. Please state whether you are speaking on behalf of yourself or for a group.
Good morning, County Commissioners. My name is Joe Cormier and I'll be speaking on behalf of myself this morning. I'd like to talk about the implementation coordinator for the Blueprint for Maryland's Future. I reached out to my state representatives who have returned the following information. Maryland Department of Legislative Services and Legislative Librarians have said, quote, "There is not any further language in the law other than the provision that indicates the coordinators to be jointly assigned." Section five dash four oh four H, therefore, the two entities will need to come to a consensus and make a joint appointment. There is no provision in the law if there is a disagreement and they are going to have to work it out. It is my understanding the VOCC believes the coordinator will have some sort of authority over how the LEA spends its funding, but the law does not provide that power to the coordinator in any way. I am not aware of this issue in any other Maryland county," end quote. Each school must submit their plan for implementation by June fifteenth, twenty-twenty. My suggestion is you review your decision and approve the appointment of Kevin Michael jointly with the BOE so the creation of this plan can get underway without delay. Mr. Michael already has an intimate specialized knowledge of Calver County instead of creating a new position and light item for the County of Ops Administrative Fund. The VOCC and BOE can continue to discuss how Calver as a whole will actually implement the legislation. Here's the consequence of the failure to act. Beginning in twenty-three, the state will withhold twenty-five percent of the increase in the state chair of major education aid over the amount provided in the current fiscal year and shall automatically withhold that from the school system for the next fiscal year, beginning in twenty-three and the end fiscal year twenty-five. The board shall release these funds withheld in this section provided that A, A, the school system has developed an implementation plan under the title and B, received approval for it. Chemoia Gardner from Strong Schools Maryland recently promote the, excuse me, presented at the Board of Education. Since two thousand seventeen, Strong Schools Maryland has been leading independent statewide nonprofit engaging in the grassroots support of the blueprint. If you have any questions, I implore you to reach out to Strong Schools Maryland. They understand this legislation backwards and forwards. In the policy cycle, we're into policy implementation. This is where the most big policy reform efforts are made of broken and at this point, where real people on the ground have to put the law to policy goals in practice.
Thank you, sir.
It's not shiny.
Please wrap up your comments. Your time is up.
Yes, sir. Uh thank you. Uh shiny, not like the activities in Legislative Section, but it's critical to ensure the policy goals become reality. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. There are no other callers on the line.
Okay, anybody in the audience wish to make comments, please identify yourself, whether you're stating as a, speaking as an individual or for a group. Thank you.
Assistant Sheriff Dave McDowell. Director Willis, thank you for that presentation, sir. Very informative. Commissioners, I'm here today just to reassert my earlier request to use the backhazard portion of the ARPA, ARPA funding for a one-time compensation for our first responders. Our deputies, sheriffs and deputies in the detention center were out there every day on these front lines. Many of them had to quarantine multiple times. We almost lost one. Our deputies in the detention center were there every day in confined space. So again, I reassert my request. Our firefighters and EMS personnel and really any employee who was out there every day on these front lines, if you could consider a one-time incentive, I greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to provide public comment? I see none.
Thank you. So at this time, it's Commissioner Reports, Commissioner Gadway. So at this time, it's Commissioner Reports, Commissioner Gadway.
Thank you, Mr. President. After our last meeting, I received a lot of questions about our masks and us wearing masks up here. And I just, and people were asking me if this is coming down into public buildings and private buildings and whatnot. From everything I understand, this is a appellate court judge determined that in all courtrooms in the state, which is where we're at, we're wearing masks. Other than that, that's where we are as a county.
That's correct.
So I just wanted to reaffirm and make sure people at home understood that this is not a county mandate, this is a court mandate. Thank you.
Was that all?
That's it.
Mr. Hart?
I want to take my time on this, Mr. President. I had some other stuff I wanted to talk about, but something happened today. My wife informed me that we had an incident at the store. She had to call the sheriff's office. Thank God, nobody was hurt. But I want to thank them publicly, again, the men and women of that sheriff's office. We've had to call over the past few years from time to time, but the person was apprehended quickly, no one harmed. And, you know, like it's like the commercial, life comes at you quick, you know? And it is a family business, my family's in there. And, you know, I mean, you operate by being open to the public and everybody, that's how we make a living. And I want to thank them that my family's safe and they are professional. And, I mean, I've said it the whole time I've been up here, but just publicly, thank you.
Commissioner McConkey?
Yeah, I just want to say I was able to attend the Mako conference last week. Was able to attend the State Highway Administration meeting with Commissioner Hans. And I believe, Steve, were you there?
Actually, we came in and Commissioner Sloganhop.
Oh, okay.
He ushered us to.
Tackled us at the door.
Yeah, right, right. Yeah, we saw him, too. And then, of course, you know, staff was in the meeting, too, and it went very well. We discussed, you know, top priorities for Calver County, and one is the bridge in Solomon's, which we keep pounding in their head and in many roads on two thirty-one. So I thought the meeting went well. It went kind of like the previous one, the previous year, and nothing's happened yet. But we want to keep on top of it, keep moving forward with it, and let the public know that we are trying, so that's all I have.
Good. Mr. Weems?
I just wanted to publicly honor Mr. Cody Mister. He was awarded the Eagle Scout Court of Honor last Sunday that Commissioner Gadway, Commissioner Hans, and myself attended. Congratulations, Cody. That's all I have.
Thank you. So as was mentioned last week, we're at Mako. For those of you that don't, Maryland Association of County Governments every year has a summer conference in Ocean City. For two days, they have sessions where you can go in and learn. Commissioner Gadway and I learned about tree equity, which is a new term for us. Also sat in on Senator Cardin's roundtable discussion, and it's amazing. They throw around billions now, like we used to talk about a hundred thousand dollars. I mean, and all these legislative packages going through Congress now are trillions of dollars. And he stood up and said, "Well, it's only a billion dollars, so, you know, it's no big deal." I mean, it's still boggles my mind that a billion dollars is nothing anymore to our government. So I can assure you that we take much better care of your mother money and think more of it than some congressmen. But it was a great success. Our Director Schlegel presented at one of the sessions, did an outstanding job, made all of us from Calver County very proud of her contribution to the session. And so, and I, too, as Commissioner Weems said, was at Cody Mister's Eagle Ceremony Sunday. Excellent young man. He's not just an Eagle Scout, he's very active in four H and an active member of the Prince River Volunteer Fire Department. So we talked Sunday. I don't know when he sleeps. I think he had a girlfriend. I don't know how he has time for that, but a really good young man. And as Colonel McDowell says, when we leave all those, it really gives you some hope in our community and its future when you go to these Eagle ceremonies. And I haven't been to a gold ceremony yet for a young lady, but you see, there are some good young people out there that have made good decisions and are on the right path. And we all sitting up here should take the Boy Scout oath and follow because it's quite, quite a guidance for your life to follow the Boy Scout Honor Code. So, and those of us that were Boy Scouts and never made it to Eagle understand how hard the journey that is. So every weekend now, because of COVID, we're going to Boy Scout Eagle ceremonies somewhere in Calver County, which is a great thing. I don't know how we rank amongst other counties, but we have a pretty good group of Eagle Scouts here in the county. And as I said, I'm not as familiar with Girl Scouts. We need to correct that. We don't get invited to those ceremonies for some reason.
No, we just had one.
I heard. I hear about them, but I never know about them until after the fact. And I did hear we have one Eagle young lady residing in Dunkirk or Owings. But, so we want to honor all those young people for the outstanding thing that they do. I want to put a plug in for the job fair on Thursday at the Prince River Volunteer Fire Department, being hosted by our own Department of Economic Development. You know, I see these people on TV saying they need this aid because they can't find a job. If you can't find a job today, you're not looking. You can't buy a "Help Wanted" sign because every business you go by, I don't care where you go in this state, there's a "Help Wanted" sign hanging outside. And if you talk to restaurant owners and any business in Calver County, they're all saying the same thing, "We need help." But they're not going to go to work as long as they keep getting paid to stay home, I'm sorry. But for those of you looking for a job, we're having a job fair on Thursday at Prince River Fire Department from, tell me, Kelly, ten to four?
Ten to four.
Ten to four, Prince River Firehouse, if you're looking for a job. There are lots of people looking for you, I can tell you that much. And Commissioner McConkey mentioned we met with State Highway on Thursday. The one difference between this meeting and the last meeting was last meeting, they told us they had to take projects away from us because they didn't have funding. They did tell us on last Thursday that they think that funding may come back, and there are some projects that are going to get back on the go list to get done. So we hope that they follow through with that, but we'll continue to beat on them to make sure that they don't forget about Calver County. Other than that, I have nothing else. I guess the Chair would entertain a motion.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Executive, sir?
You were quick on that.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to adjourn. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Y'all have a great day.
That was four to one.
Four to one. Have a great day.
I hadn't get one in today.